So we can talk about the items on the agenda for next Monday. Okay.
It's pretty hard today. I'll admit.
Chief, Chief Beard, would you like to go first? Could you?
Yeah, I could. There's a couple guys.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Is that okay with you, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is the due diligence report from the Police Department. We're going to talk about that first, so the gentleman from Klinger's, if they need to.
I'll leave these out of the ones for the other council member. I've got one for the media.
So what I've kind of, it's kind of loud. There we go. What I've tried to do is I've, and I'll walk you through this, but I've highlighted sections that are of importance, and then you can obviously read the document when you have a chance, but as we go through it, I'm just going to kind of summarize the document and kind of the points that I think are important for discussion, or some questions that you may have. So if you want to start, right on page one, the executive summary, abstract.
Just so folks at home know, we're talking about the valuation of the U.S. Bank Building.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
But on page one, it talks about the existing HVAC equipment is original, and although well-maintained, has exceeded its life expectancy, and consideration should be given to replacing the HVAC, which we expected. I mean, we knew that that equipment was the original equipment, and when we were pricing the facility or trying to get an idea from Estes, we assumed that or included that, so we had plans on doing that from the beginning. Also, as part of the summary, I think it's important that we note, no flooding issues have ever been reported. I know that that was a concern, so that's been pointed out. And the fire sprinkler system is located on the basement level only, and I'll explain that a little better as we go. I've been in contact with Mark Crooks and Mark Hirschberger here from the city to talk about the backflow prevention device, and then what we're going to maybe do in the future for fire protection in the building. But it says, though major renovations will be required to meet the requirements of a police station and current building code standards, the U.S. Bank Building is well suited for such transformation. So I thought that was a real important part of the study, that Klinger, through their evaluation, has kind of agreed with what we thought from the beginning, that, yeah, it's going to require renovation, but the building and its components are well-prepared to do that. So then, if you'd like to turn your attention to page three.
We don't have a specific idea yet, though, on what the building might look like. Have you thought about that? I mean, I notice here it says about the glass, so are.
Yeah, we haven't started in design and concept yet. And our kind of art, we have met with Estes, and kind of the preliminary plan was about the time U.S. Bank breaks ground, if they decide at West Avenue and Roosevelt, kind of the proposed site, that's about the time we'll start design. And he had a real good reason behind that. If we start designing now or a little bit too soon, those bid documents to put out to bid are going to be very dated, six or eight months dated.
Okay.
And we want those bid documents to be as fresh as we can get, to get the most accurate bid back that we can. So that's kind of preliminary, the plan to start our design and concept. He really felt he could put together documents in eight to 10 months at the absolute most.
Okay.
But no, that hasn't been started yet. So on page three, I think it's important that we just briefly talk about the foundation lease. There is a lease that's there in front of the property where you see that, I don't want to say that artwork or that design, that that's there for the Witty Foundation, and those leases will stay in place. So, I mean, as long as, I guess, they want to keep it in place. I don't know if they might want a new presence at the new bank or leave that one there, I don't know, but it's just important that that lease is in place and that it would stay in place.
Mm-hmm.
And then if you go down to 2.2, halfway through the paragraph, it talks about, there's a pre-cast concrete building, and when they put those blocks together, those joints may need to be redone or at least looked at again as the project moves forward to make sure those joints are sealed and stay sealed. It talks a little bit about that. I thought it was important that we keep that in mind as we go through design and concept to make sure that that's part of the renovation if the contractor feels it's necessary. Page five, I'll draw your attention to the roof. It was re-roofed and completed in 2011, and it does have a 15-year warranty that came with that, so I would anticipate that the roof is going to be in good shape, and we kind of, we knew that the roof had been replaced, but we weren't real sure when. So that was in 2011, and it has a 15-year warranty, which is also attached to this report.
And it can be transferred to us, the warranty?
Yeah, yes, sir. Page six, under general storage, again, this just talks about the building owner representative stated that the basement level has never experienced any flooding issues, nor were there any signs of seepage. So again, just to reiterate that they were in the basement, and that that's dry down there, which has always been my feelings as well.
Mm-hmm.
Page eight, we're going to talk a little bit about the sprinkler system and what I learned. The basement is all wet sprinkled, and the reason it is is because it was required by code since it's such a long distance to the exits, it had to be wet sprinkled. But then the next two levels didn't have to be because of the occupancy. It is called a business occupied, and that would, that rating will stay the same for us. So in conversations with Fire Marshal Crooks, we're not going to have to wet sprinkle the building, but he said if we're completely renovating it and we have it that far, he said you might look at it and at least price it and consider it. He said the biggest expense with the wet sprinkle system's already in place, and that's the structure, the water supply, the four-inch supply is already there, and the infrastructure, I guess, is already built for the sprinkle system. It's just the piping was never to the second, or first and second floor, because it didn't have to be. So as we move forward, just maybe keep that in the back of your mind. I think it's worthy of consideration, or the Fire Department really thinks it's worthy of consideration, but with that said, it currently meets code other than the backflow protection device. The device that's on there now to keep the sprinkler water separate from the drinking water or potable water, there's a device, and it's not in code, and that would have to be replaced for sure. I don't know how expensive that is. We haven't got that far, but that is something that'll have to be addressed for sure. Page 11, I noted, under the elevator machine room, the elevator equipment is not enclosed with fire-resistant construction, and there's two elevator rooms, and they're both the same. They're not in code, so when we do go through renovation, that's something that we're going to have to make sure we take care of, that those mechanical rooms are up to code as far as fire prevention. And like I said, both of those elevator rooms were the same. The elevators were okay, that wasn't the problem, but it's the room that handles all the equipment to run the elevator. And one more page, page 12. This is where we're kind of starting to talk about some of the ADA compliance issues. And the doors lack required maneuvering clearances to be considered compliant with current standards. Well, again, this will be part of the renovation. I'm confident that most of those doors probably won't be there. And the doors that are, I mean, obviously, they're going to have to be brought into code as far as how far they open, or do they open completely so it's wheelchair accessible? I think that's what they're referring to. And they talk about the bathrooms. The bathrooms aren't big enough for, to be wheelchair accessible, so I don't know if that's just a matter of moving partitions or whatever it would take, but those bathrooms, I think it's important that we note that they're not in compliance, that we're going to have to do some things to make them in compliance with ADA. And there was a few minor things, like the wall-mounted lavatory, wasn't insulated, the women's stalls are the same as the men's, and again, the doorways. But they kind of finished that up by saying renovations to size of these rooms and location of fixtures will be required, which we would assume that anyway. We wouldn't have used those, reused those same fixtures.
Okay.
And it talks about one of the drinking fountains on page 13, and I've seen the drinking fountain they're talking about. It, this, the drinking fountain sticks out from the wall too far. It's something to do with your clearance of your feet underneath the drinking fountain, so. I mean, these are very minor things, but they're things that are out of code. Page 14, in the kitchenette, the sink that's in that kitchenette is non-compliant, which again, I'm reiterating myself, but those, through renovation, all these things are going to change. So I'll point your attention on page 14, 3.0, structural condition. The only blemishes that were observed was damage to the southwest corner of the building where it apparently was struck by a vehicle. And if you look at the photograph, you'll see where there's a little bit of, like, masonry part that was put on, on top of the concrete that was chipped off when this car hit it. And then a problem with the sidewalk at the walk-in entrance of the drive-up facility, which that's all, all that's coming out anyway. That sure wouldn't be a problem. Page 15, insulation quality and quantity, or quantity and quality. It talks about the insulation that's there, and it's of very high value, but if we're going to renovate it, maybe we could even increase that value more. So again, that's just worthy of noting. And 4.2, again, it just talks about the HVAC equipment that we've already discussed, that it's in good working order, it's been well-maintained, it works, but it's 44 years old, that's the bottom line. It's probably going to need replaced. Page 16 talks about that a little bit more, but it talks about the reheating coils that are used as you zone off these different rooms, they use the reheat coil to change the temperature, like if you wanted this room different than that room. And most of these coils, again, are 44 years old, and they really don't function as such, and they're really not in good working order at all. So I think that the whole HVAC is going to, we're going to need to take a hard look at Page 17, the plumbing, and this was a concern of mine to make sure. I wanted to know about those sump pumps that were, that were in the basement, and Klinger really did a good job of doing this in detail for us, and it talks about those, the pump systems appear to have been well-maintained and are in good condition, and they have a replacement pump down there, just in case something would go wrong, we have an extra pump. The only thing they recommended were the drain tiles underneath the foundation. They didn't have a camera, and I'm sure Tim or Councilman Scott's very familiar with this, and they recommended maybe putting a camera through all those different drain tiles under the foundation, just to make sure that those tiles were in good working order. So that was one thing they didn't do or didn't have the ability to do that they think, at least down the road as this project moves forward, we maybe need to take a look at those.
Need a card?
Yeah, I think I know who to call. Page 18, a little brief thing about the water heater, which again, it talks about, it works, but if we're going to renovate it, we might consider doing something different with the water heater. No big deal there. Then the flow rates, again, of some of the stools and urinals in the building, I mean, the flow rates are going to have, they'd have to be replaced to meet new codes, to reduce those flow rates. Page 18, again, you'll see it talks about the same thing. The backflow prevention device is no longer considered code compliant, so that's definitely something that'll have to be replaced. Page 19, it talks a little bit about the backup generator. Again, that's not a big concern of mine. I mean, the generator we have at the current building will do absolutely everything we needed it to do, because it talked about we should consider replacing the transfer switch, and they weren't real sure. The generator will run the safety features in the bank now, but our current generator runs everything. It's just like you don't even know the power went off, and I think that that's something that for sure we need to consider. The people working in there, no matter what time of the day, if it has to go to backup power, it shouldn't be just for exit lighting and those things, but to actually run the building, and we have the generator to do that. Just talk briefly about the lighting and consider to go to LED-type fixtures, which that'd be pretty obvious. The low voltage systems on page 20 were very well-maintained, and they weren't having any trouble with those, and it talks about the current fire alarm system is in very good condition, and all pole, all pole stations located at all exit doorways seem to be in good working order. And those are really the highlights that I picked out of the report that I thought for sure we needed to be aware of. I mean, I've read this thing cover to cover numerous times, and that's kind of what stands out to me, that as we move through this process, we need to be aware of, but there's no surprises, there's nothing in there that I didn't really think would be in there. I mean, so that's kind of what I wanted to bring forward and make sure everybody understood, and they did a really good job with the photographs and documenting. It's just a very detailed report, I thought. It met or exceeded expectations, so thank you for that. Did I miss anything that you think would maybe be important, that they should know that I maybe didn't catch in the report, or that I didn't highlight?
One small thing, one of the elevator rooms does have a room around it, the other doesn't have any walls around it.
Okay.
They're not the same, but they both have to be fire-rated when you get done and give it away, so any renovation, you do want to have them up.
You might want to come up to the microphone and say that, because people at home can't hear what you just said, so it's not a big, huge deal, but just say who you are and.
I'm Tony Dewald with Klinger and Associates.
Hi, Tony.
Just a small thing, was that elevator rooms are not the same. One of them has walls, one of them doesn't. The original plan showed walls, and they didn't put them in. We don't know why, but when it gets renovated, we just have to update.
Which we had to do anyway, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Other than that, the building's in pretty good shape.
Thank you, Tony. So, any questions? Tim, are you okay? Anything?
Tim Stevens with Klinger and Associates. Just one thing I thought might be of importance is that some of the fireproofing insulation on the roof deck has fallen off, we assume, when they last re-roofed the building, and therefore, that protection is no longer available. Could only witness it over the boardroom, but I assume that that's happened all over, and that might make a difference in your insurance rates and how well it would stand up in a fire. So just thought that was of importance.
Okay, thank you, Tim. You have anything, Mr. Scott, at this point?
I just, is the sanitary in storm, are those, are those lift stations that, I don't understand their function.
What page are you on?
I'm looking at the picture on page 31. Does the sanitary go into, into a lift station?
Everything in the basement, sanitary goes to that lift station, gets pumped out into the sewer, and then everything under the floor for the drainage tile for stormwater.
There's facilities in the basement then?
Yes.
Bathrooms and everything, okay.
Yep, yep.
What steps do we need to take to close on this? We've given them $50,000 as a, we've put that down as essentially earnest money is going through this process. Do you know, I haven't even looked at how our agreement's set up to see what, if there's any additional action items that need to be taken?
Well, I don't, I don't think so. I think our, this was important, and we have the Estes inspection currently ongoing, but that's, that's going to be what it is, so I don't think that'll really have a bearing on the closing of the building.
Do we have a closing date?
We had 90 days.
Yep.
From when we approved this, and that was the beginning of January, and I can't remember, I think the first council meeting in January, whatever the date was for that. So we should have a couple of weeks here yet to, to take action on it. And really, we're looking to see if there are any major issues that came up from the report, things that we hadn't anticipated that would be showstoppers. I mean, and from what we've seen so far, it's showing, it's identifying things that are, things that need to be addressed as we move forward, but nothing that is, from what I'm hearing, out of the ordinary for what you would expect with a 40-year building, and part of what you would normally want to make sure that you address as you do a renovation or rehab on a structure of this type.
Yeah, I know for sure we were waiting on this report before we made any, any decisions on closing the property, but, because I think Patrick is fairly good with the abstract title indeed, I think, so.
Yeah.
I think we're probably pretty close.
Yeah, nothing's come up to, that we're, that are saying that you need to stop, so. So, do, in other words, do we need any council action to say we accept the report? I need, I need to see if, we'll have to check and see if there's another item that we need to do. I mean, essentially, you've already approved closure, since I don't know what steps need to be done to formal, to formalize that, not having gone through this process. People are. Because our 90 days is rapidly expiring.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I don't know that there's another action from the council. All right. But if there is, I'll let you know. I just, I think that your actions have been taken, it's more looking to see if there's any showstoppers, and we're not seeing it. Okay. Anything else, Chief, on this?
No. Oh, thanks. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
If you have any questions as you read through the document, feel free to call, and if I don't know the answer, I'll get the answer.
All right. Thank you, Tony and Tim. You have any, anything else? Reason I wanted to do this first is so you didn't have to sit through the whole meeting. You're welcome to leave unless you're really interesting, interested in this thing. Okay, thank you, guys. All right, back to the top. Eric has a proclamation for Earth Day coming up, and then we have a public hearing for an encroachment agreement for Douglas and Dana Atkins at 914 Maple, and I assume that's for Kayla's cupboard. Is that correct?
Yeah, I have a map here and that show on the thing. Yeah, it's just a stairway entrance for Kayla's cupboard. They have a new door there, and so it's just three steps up and then a concrete landing just on Maple Street. It's 11 and a half foot wide from the building to the curb there, so there's plenty of room. This is their rough sketch, but will be five and a half feet from the edge of the ramp to the nearest light pole and over six feet to the edge of the curb, but this will just allow better exterior access into Kayla's cupboard instead of going through Dana's total image, so.
Yeah. No problem. Okay. Public hearing, consideration ordinance, amending ordinance 3360 for Burlington Crossing, PUD for signage.
It's just some minor changes, kind of coinciding with some of our other PUD areas along Roosevelt Avenue, particularly similar to Buffalo Wild Wings area down there, Culvers, Happy Joe's, the freestanding sign not to exceed 25 feet in height. Under the previous developer, he had proposed six feet in height, which was well under what our typical code requirements were. This is still under what many of our requirements on Roosevelt are, but it is more in line with some of the newer PUDs, and then allowing the shared signage similar to Dick's Sporting Goods on the site. And, and then allowing the distance between the shared pole signs and the freestanding signs for the businesses, so just kind of a cleanup based on some of the other PUDs in the area and what their request is going forward.
Okay.
None of this is over and above what our typical code would require. It's still more restricted than our typical code, so.
Okay. Mr. Scott? Okay. No problems?
We're going to have to go back and change it like we did with the other one.
Yeah.
Good.
As, just as you're talking about that area, we don't have this on the agenda, but in trying to get property transitioned over for that development to occur, we've taken action with the, two different times with purchasing land from Walgreens. We'll have another step as we go to transition that land to the developer. We had it as part of the development agreement for a purchase price at 16,000 for that sliver, but with the land act was, or the land sale that we did back in the end in November, beginning of December, whenever that was, that we finally took action on that. It, the part that, the land that was legally described in there was for what we currently owned at the time. This is an additional part, so we haven't provided public notice of the sale of this sliver of land. So we'll have to go through, even though we've done a development agreement for the sale, we haven't publicly listed the notification on this legal description. At least that's what I'm getting from our attorney, so we'll probably having a set date for public hearing on this next meeting, having that hearing on the 18th of April. Doesn't stop.
I was going to say, it's not going to delay anything, is it?
No, no, it'll just mean that with the closure, the closing for transferring land over to the developer, it'll probably be in two stages, one for what's already been done, and then a second step on the other part. We've already formalized the agreement to transfer it over through the, through the TIF, that, what the TIF requires with that development agreement, so all the terms have already been out there and notified. It's just you haven't provided notification on this land description. So the terms are all already set and approved. Thank you. The next item is the final adoption concerning the South 14th Street Right-Away located 1800, 1802, 1804, South 15th Street. It was continued from our last council meeting because we had concerns about the laterals. And so Eric has a, how are we going to do that? We have to make this an amendment?
You have to amend.
Yeah, and so in your packet, this next time, you'll have language for the steps to, to take from the attorney, however the wording is for making that amendment to match what you see in there. Eric, you want to go through what you've amended in Exhibit C?
Yeah, this is Item C, which previously just stated there'd be an easement over the entire portion of Right-Away for utility maintenance and an easement for access on the western side of that. This provides for perpetual non-exclusive easement for permanent structure, paved driveway, other paved service, which shall be located within the Right-Away. Nothing shall be located within that Right-Away that's being vacated without the city's prior written consent, and further, the construction of any improvements shall require the relocation of any private sewer lateral line servicing properties on the east side of South 14th Street at the requesting owner's sole cost and expense. So the individuals that are vacating this Right-Away would be there, cost and expense to move that private sewer lateral if they were desiring to pave in that area or locate the paving not over top of that sewer lateral, so.
Does that work for you, Mr. Scott?
No.
Still not, huh?
No. I just, I'm, I'm not seeing the advantage to the city and the citizens, and I'm not really seeing the advantage to the, to the people that live there, and I'm seeing a future that's going to become a frustration for the Police Department and development. I just, and the, I think there's going to be drives put in there, but they're going to end up being gravel and not hard surface like they're supposed to be. That's already been stated by one of the adjacent property owners. But, you know, I've been wrong before.
Not very often.
I, I'm really concerned with the precedent that this sets and the potential for problems in the, in the future. I did have one question. Where, where do they pick up trash at? Do they pick it up in that alley, or are they picking it up?
Yeah, right now, it's on the alley portion, but they'd have to move that, which they're aware of and agree to.
They'll, they'll have to move it to 14th Street or to. They'll have to move it to Fourteenth Street or to?
I believe either Fourteenth or Fifteenth. I believe Fifteenth.
Do we have trash pickup on Fourteenth and Fifteenth now?
There is on Fifteenth, I believe. I'd have to double check with Don on that.
Yeah, there must be, because the rest of that block has to go somewhere with their trash.
Well, Fifteenth Street goes all the way back to Fourteenth Street anyway. On the other half of that, on the west side, or I'm sorry, the north side of that block, and then on Fourteenth Street, they have alley, Fourteenth facing the west have alleys where it's picked up. I just, I drove by and I didn't see where the, I wasn't sure if they picked up on the street or the alley on Fourteenth in that block.
Tomorrow morning would be the time to find, because that should be their pickup tomorrow morning. Okay. Anything else? Okay, Eric. All right. Then we have the second reading of an amendment to ordinance thirty-three fifty-one, Westbrook Meadows Plan Unit for Outlet A, not Lot A.
This is a continuation of the Westbrook Meadows PUD, just bringing the provisions from the existing development, as seen here, to the north to Outlet A. Couple of items shall be allowed as single-family attached housing, where each unit shall be located on an individual lot. This is zero lot line development with townhouse, fourplex townhouse and duplex structures. Minimum front yard setbacks should be twenty feet. Side yard setbacks shall be allowed zero feet between property lines where a building is over a property line and five feet on all others. Rear yard setbacks should be twenty-five feet with the exception of lots nine and twelve being allowed a fifteen-foot rear yard setback. Minimum lot area is three thousand square feet for each individual lot and a minimum of six thousand square feet where two units are attached. Again, just a continuation of the previous development. This was planned to be part of the PUD from the onset, but didn't have the exact specifications of which lots would be, have zero lot line development until brought forward the plans. And so that's where we're at at this point, is just continuing the Westbrook Meadows PUD into Outlet A.
So that goes along with Item Eight, then, with the preliminary plat?
Yeah, Item Eight's the preliminary plat. I guess part of the timing of the preliminary plat is to come forward at the final reading. This developer has requested to waive the third reading and move forward with his development if there's no comments or questions.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, but I don't know if we can, without the other three people.
It's kind of hard to make a suggestion when there's only two of you.
Yeah. We can put it out there and see what they think, at least, right?
Well, it takes two of us to put it on the agenda. It takes three of us to approve it.
Right. So, let's, let's put it out there and then?
Can have it leased there, so Kathleen can have it ready.
Yeah. That'd be my suggestion, anyway. I really don't see any reason as.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay. So that takes care of Item Eight also?
Yeah, Item Eight's just formalizing the actual lots that each structure's located on with a preliminary plat.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, Mike, it looks like we go. All right, now, Item Seven was a preliminary adoption, a second reading ordinance rezoning the property located west of Garden, Lawn, and Dill Street from R1 single-family to R2 single-family transitional with the Southern Cross PUD overlay zone.
So this again, they're looking at thirty lots with zero lot line development as previously described, have duplex condos where each individual condo unit would be on a separate lot, but under typical development, you can, in an R2 zone that they're proposing to rezone to, you can have a duplex on a single lot. They're just proposing to have zero lot line development. This shows the layout. Couple items with this, currently there's three dead-end streets, Garden, Lawn, and Dill. They've been dead-end streets since the nineteen seventies. Something that was originally planned was Terrace Avenue connecting from the north.
Yeah.
Was intended to be the, one of the primary through streets from West Avenue to Mason Road. That got shifted to Lord's Drive with the commercial on either side of that. So that left this lot somewhat unusual position where there's three dead-end streets coming into it and no road connections. This was the, yellow's the original plan connection for Terrace Drive. That did not happen. The school came in and made the connection to Mason Road. There are other planned streets in the area just based on development. Don't know when those will occur. Would be Sequoia and Dill connecting over to the Sunrise West subdivision with a connection from Mason Road to West Avenue on Cambridge, but all that, again, subject to developers coming forward or individuals that own the lot developing the land, which, as we see with Garden, Lawn, and Dill from the nineteen seventies, this lot's been sitting there, so it's not a fast-growth area. Couple of the questions that came up are street widths. I believe Lawn is at thirty-one feet wide currently. Our typical residential street width is twenty-seven feet, and that is what is planned within the preliminary plat of Southern Cross subdivision, so they're not asking for any waivers on the street width. That's our normal, every, pretty much every residential subdivision has a twenty-seven foot wide street width that they're proposing here. I know they brought up some of the owners along Lawn, I believe it's Lawn, correct me if I'm wrong, but being thirty-one foot wide, said they paid for that to be wider at the time. Might have made more sense if Terrace Drive connected through to have that connection over to Willow at the time as well, which could have been part of the reason for that. Right-Aways in residential areas are typically fifty or sixty feet in width, depending on the location and development. This is proposing fifty feet in width, which isn't a huge outlier from some of the other right-Aways that we've had in dead-end situations where they're not through streets. Zero lot line development, again, each unit would be on its own separate lot, essentially a duplex condo covering two lots, where the combined lot area of the two lots would have to meet our minimum lot size for R2 districts, which these do, and allowing up to duplex maximum. So each lot, combination of two lots would have to be a minimum of three thousand square feet, which most of these are around nine, a little over nine thousand square feet in area, so they're well above the minimum six thousand square feet for a duplex. Typical lots on Garden, Lawn, and Dill are around nine thousand square feet, so the single-size lot of, lots on Garden, Lawn, and Dill are a little bigger than what's in here. Setbacks, they are requesting to reduce the setbacks, the typical setbacks, the front and rear setbacks, maintain the minimum twenty-foot front yard setback that would allow off-street parking on their private property. In addition, they're all planning to have two-car garages except for three lots in the northeast corner that are a little smaller. The remaining lots would have two-car garages plus two off-street parking spaces in front of those garages. The other ones that have a one-car garage would have one car in front as well to have at least two off-street parking spaces, so I believe all but three units within this development would have four off-street parking spaces for each unit. Did, one of the questions that came up during the last meeting was the setback adjacent to the existing homes. So we went back and looked at what those are. Well, hard to see here, but the blue shows the zero lot line development with the fifteen-foot rear yard setback between the property line to the east and the back of the home. If this was just R2 without the PUD, this red would be one, could be one lot without the zero lot line, and based on the orientation, this would now be a side yard, which would be five or seven feet. And then looking at the separation between existing homes, I have thirteen feet to, between these two and eighteen feet here. So generally, through this PUD, at least on, for these lots along the existing homes, the setback would be greater than what it normally would be within the subdivision, so.
Okay, that's good. That's good.
If that makes sense. There need any clarification on that, but?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
What's the, what's rear yard setback in R2?
It's twenty-five, but if this were a single lot, the front yard would be on Lawn, the rear yard would be to the north, and the side yard would be over here. Since they're doing zero lot line development, now the front yard is on this new street and the rear yard is over here, just based on our code. The front yard's always the shortest side, even though this has two front yards. The rear yard would be to the north, and then the side yard would be on this east side.
I'm not concerned about the what-if.
Our typical rear yard's twenty-five feet, so.
And what's the front yard?
Typical front yard's twenty-five feet.
And what is, what are they proposing for front yard?
Twenty feet in the front and fifteen in the back.
I noticed that maybe Ryan, or Steve, maybe, if you've been out there, Dill Street has some degree of degradation involved in it. Is there something planned for that, or?
Off the top of my head, I believe Dill Street's scheduled for, let's see, not this, fiscal year nineteen reconstruction, I believe.
Okay.
Well, actually, I think it's on there as resurfacing, but it's, the defect out there, it's going to need reconstruction. It's been tossed back and forth on what to do out there.
Yeah, it's kind of like?
Over the past few.
Was it like Gilbert?
Fiber street plans.
Like Gilbert Street?
Yeah, it's same defects. It's de-cracking. One of those things that we might be able to overlay, but the lifespan of that overlay's going to be minimal.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Ryan. All right, so this, this is just rezoning, and the planning commission's meeting tomorrow to do?
Meeting tomorrow on the preliminary plat. That'll come forward at a future meeting. So the primary three items that are being requested through this PUD are the setbacks, the twenty-foot in the front, the fifteen-foot in the back, and then having the zero lot line development, and then the lot size through the, based on the width of the lot, the lot size isn't the typical hundred-foot depth lot, it's eighty-five feet, just to fit the public street in and have two rows of housing. That's where the setback reduction comes into play.
I see. But all of that is not really for us to consider?
No, the setbacks through this PUD are part of that.
That's something we'll have to consider in the future.
Yeah, the.
Say it again?
The setbacks are part of this PUD. The lot dimensions are part of the preliminary plat that.
Which the Planning and Zoning Commission is scheduled to consider tomorrow.
Yeah.
Then they'll bring a recommendation to us.
The setbacks are part of this ordinance that you have right here.
Yeah, setbacks are part of this ordinance, though.
Setbacks are part of this ordinance.
Okay. Because of the, we're changing it from R1 to R2.
For the, the ordinance is approving a PUD with the altered or minimized setbacks.
Okay, that's what we needed, the clarification on that. Okay.
Eric, are you bringing this forward because of the developer's request? I mean, you think this is good planning?
It's typical planning to have R1 to an R2 to a commercial development. Not, I don't know if the number of units, if what's the right number there meets our requirements. If this were just a typical R2 and there were ten more feet, the depth or width of the lot was ten or twenty more feet, they wouldn't have to ask for these setback requirements. It's just the width of the lot. They could just ask for an R2 zoning, and then it would meet pretty much every other requirement, which is typical to go from an R1 to an R2 to commercial and have more dense as you go through there. So I'm not going to say thirty units is too many or is right, or twenty-eight's too many or just right, but the provisions of it and how they're laying it out make sense from a planning perspective of having that buffer between the commercial and single-family residential, allowing three streets to connect that have been dead ends for forty years. And just knowing this lot is not a usual width configuration that makes it difficult to develop. And so it, from that stance, and then from our comprehensive plans, talking about infill lots and allowing different provisions to allow higher-density residential pockets with closer to low-density areas that allow that infill development to occur, it meets those provisions as well. I'm not going to say what number of units is right or wrong, but just the concept of it makes sense.
That's a good answer. I, I think that's our decision.
Right. Yeah.
The reason I asked that question is because of this, the change in the setbacks, and I don't know who this, who this is going to be marketed to, if it's, you know, if we're, what size units are those, how many bedrooms?
Check here. I think they're mostly two-bedroom homes with two-car attached garage. He's estimating around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit that he'd be selling price for. And so looking at teachers, people that have a steady income that would be able to move in there, families, young families starting out, or even possibly similar to Sunrise West or Mason Meadows, some of those condos for seniors, so probably have quite a mix of individuals. But that price point, I think we have a housing study assessment coming up. Some of the indications that we've all known are shortest of housing of all income types are all price points, and so that might provide some insight on what type of housing's needed as well. But he is looking at a hundred and fifty thousand, approximately to two hundred thousand per unit sale price.
So is this going to be one of those developments that has maintenance fees involved?
Yeah, it'd be a condo association. And not to group Mikes into it, because they're two totally different settings, but it's the similar type, concept of zero lot line development, reduced front yard setbacks, compact development.
Yeah.
This just happens to be on an infill site where you have existing neighborhoods. Mike's is on a arterial street where there's not the neighbors to have that input. It's already established for what it is, so, and different price points there as well. But that, just a difficult infill site that sat there for forty years, and he brought forward a proposal that meets a lot of the provisions of our code, but did have to have some modification to make it work, and that's why there's a PUD for it.
All right, well, we'll see what the Planning and Zoning Commission has to say about it, too, then.
And one provision of the rezoning is it's tied to approving the preliminary plat as well, so they both have to be approved for this to go forward.
Yeah, okay.
We've talked a little bit to Eric in regards to, I mean, when you have areas of town where you have small, we have other areas of town that have lots that don't conform to current standards. This is a separate topic, but you're looking to potentially bring a proposal for consideration if you can ever develop it in regards to infill, infill lots. What might that kind of look like that you might be bringing to them to consider?
Well, I guess a couple of different things.
Very preliminary.
Yeah, just looking at single lots that are demolished or vacant in existing neighborhoods. What's the right setbacks, or taking neighborhood considerations into play, but also how do you redevelop these? And then larger lots like this. Some of the homes we're demolishing, they're not able to be rebuilt there. We have a lot of historic older homes that if they had a fire, they couldn't be rebuilt in their same footprint. And so looking at our setbacks and what makes sense in neighborhoods and existing areas and?
And as we do that, what can we do that is done in a coordinated manner that you can apply on a fairly consistent basis?
Yeah, either through the PUD or through just our typical zoning, allowing different setbacks based on, maybe a, a more defined area would allow, or more defined conditions would allow certain setbacks that aren't typical just for new greenfield developments. That it, coming in, you know it's going to have a twenty-foot front yard setback or a forty-five percent lot coverage or something. So, I mean, having those established up front for some of these sites, instead of coming to council and asking, making it into a special consideration, it's more typical consideration for that neighborhood, especially in a lot of our historic areas or older areas, that that's just what, how they're developed. They're more compact, they have more lot coverage, they have smaller setbacks, and not having to have them come for a variance or ask for a PUD to rebuild what was already there, or fill in an existing lot.
And, I mean, I kind of, just speaking with it, this is, it's a different topic, but this has been one that we've had some newspaper coverage on and other conversation on, just in regards to a house that had burned down and how our standards fall in. Well, we have? We have to apply the standards the way they are, but is there a way to look at some potential adjustments as time goes on that would allow something to be done that's not just a, a reaction to a, a, a specific circumstance, but looks at that in a holistic way that you can apply community-wide and I, and I guess that's part of the charge to Eric is how do we look at some of those things too on some of these infill situations?
Our code's set up very well for new green development where you have abundance of land and can develop all these standards, but we do have a lot of pockets in older neighborhoods and older areas that aren't standard to today's codes, cause they were built before we had zoning codes and how do we make sure we're allowing redevelopment and infill sites proper, proper due as well and not just trying to fit them into our normal nineteen-seventies zoning code?
Yeah.
And I don't know that there's a ea- easier right answer, that we'll be able to bring something that can cover everything, but it's something we're looking at.
It is something that we're at least looking at and trying to address and, I mean, when you deal with non-conforming lots, you just end up with what, what can you do and, and have it be something that you can logically apply consistently in similar situations? It's kinda difficult at times.
Yeah. Okay. Good, thanks. Uh, item nine, we have a resolution approving a tentative agreement between the city of Burlington and Iowa local seventy-one seventy-six of commu- commu- communication workers of America, AFL-CIO.
We'll kinda go through this a little bit, uh, we, in terms of where this fits in philosophically with where the council feels about bargaining and where we should be. Uh, we do plan on having, uh, the attorney do a, a special closed session for bargaining purposes, so you can think about it from a philosophical perspective and where does the group as a whole feel is the right strategy. Uh, prior to next meeting, five o'clock next Monday is a closed session for that. But in terms of what you see here, um, this is, the tentative agreement that's in here, uh, for the terms are fairly comparable to what we had within the fire, uh, contract. Uh, the CWAs is a five-year, same type of terms as what the, the fires was. And the health provisions with employees starting to contribute, uh, the three, four, six, eight, ten, those staggered up with the caps that you see in there on the single and family plan, those are the same limits that we're in uh, with the, the fire department's, uh, contract ten- or tentative agreement. The wages at two and a quarter a, a year are very, well, those, that's the same percentage that was in on the, the fire as well. Uh, the other terms, a lot of those are things that don't mean a tremendous amount to me from a financial perspective, but chief, do you have any comments operationally on some of the terms that are in, in there that, that, that are significant for your department?
I mean, no, not really, the rest of the contract pretty much is gonna fall in line, we had a couple of issues come up about vacation days and how those are used and/or reserved. But we're gonna keep current contract, but I was willing to sit down and have union management try to work our way through that and how we feel over time on night shift versus day shift, again, it'll be current contract. But we're gonna sit down and talk about that and just figure out the logistical process of that, but really, other than that, everything is pretty much current contract for the very most part, so. I mean, I think both sides were happy to, to get to where we are.
Again, this is a tentative agreement, the CWA has not formally, that, considered this, I think that is in the.
I believe that's tomorrow morning, or tomorrow sometime, I think it's in the morning, they're gonna put it up for ratification, so.
So we.
We'll know.
And then we, we would have it for consideration for this next week and again, in terms of where does this fit philosophically, you've had, we've, we've tried to set some, find out what the parameters were from the council in, in a couple of other closed sessions and kinda review from, with the attorney to be able to talk with you as a group next week about where does this fit and make sure that it's matching where you're philosophically at. So I'm trying to do what I can to set some context for a closed session, but.
I, I see it says remove communication officer, I assume that's because they go to DESCOM as.
Yeah, yeah, DESCOM's a separate legal entity now, as a matter of fact, they were negotiating today a sep- completely separate contract from.
And there's some language in there about the evidence tech as well?
Yeah, just adding them in the addendum A, I mean, they're, they're not in the union, they're not eligible to be in the union, they're a part-time employee, but their weight scale is put into the addendum A, so everybody knows what it is.
Okay, all right. Okay. Anything, Mr. Scott?
Thank you.
Good, thanks chief. Thank you, Jim. HMA resurfacing project is next up for twenty sixteen. We have bids come back?
Yes, we did and have some interesting news. Okay, so the twenty sixteen HMA resurfacing projects are annual overlay project, nothing special there. Milling up old asphalt streets and applying, uh, new asphalt overlay. Additionally, there's a couple of, well, I guess one concrete street that's getting a new overlay. And we've got some patching on another concrete street, uh, had three bids come in, Miller Excavating and Asphalt out of Fort Madison, WL Miller Company out of Hamilton, Illinois. And then, um, OMG Midwest doing business as, uh, Sessford Construction, uh, based out of Burlington. Miller was the low bid at five hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. At the public hearing, there was discussion about, we would bid the project as is and cut back, um, to get within budget. The streets we're looking at removing, uh, there's some potential minor legal issues with actually removing that street, uh, due to change of scope. Uh, if we were to do that, we'd need to rebid the project, uh, that is an action that the council could take. Uh, we also do have, um, some residential street improvement funding that can cover the difference between the bids and, uh, the current budget.
The other thing that, um, I was out most, or the end of last week, so this was a very kind of off-the-cuff conversation having with, with Stephanie about where to try to fit in a co- cost overrun. Uh, but the road use tax fund has a, a, a big enough cash balance that we could transfer over some funds, uh, to be, to cover the shortfall as well. Um, I guess the bigger concern was, if you went out to bid again, do you think you'd get better pricing or do you think that the?
No, uh, I really don't, the low bidder actually, I've had some communication with the gentleman that wasn't the low bidder, intended to be a sub, about prices and he talked to, uh, the concrete sub for the low bid and there was actually an error, uh, when they bid, they shouldn't have bid as low as they did on some parts of it. So that price, that'll definitely go back up. The asphalt portion could go either way, uh, one consideration when we came into this, I told you my cost estimate was iffy at best. Asphalt came in actually a great deal higher than anticipated to the tune of probably fifteen percent.
Really?
Uh, with the price of oil being down, that was a bit unexpected, but my understanding is that, uh, the people bidding the projects don't actually get to make that decision, it's higher up, uh, for what the price is that they sell. Uh, Miller Excavating and Sessford actually have the same asphalt price, the cost difference there was actually in concrete. So, I don't see that bidding the project will get us better prices in the long run.
With, and so with that in mind, road use tax, again, I think has one point five million that we came into the year with, uh, sitting at one point eight million at the end of February. If that, if I'm remembering, two million. The fund, the, the fund balance there is adequate that we can, we can afford to transfer over and, and you know, I've talked on the radio show a couple of times about what do you do when the snow budget is, comes in below budget? Eventually, you can use those funds to, to make up for a shortfall in a project like this and I think this is a, an appropriate spot to do it.
Seems like it to me too.
And twenty inches of snow falls next week.
Hush your mouth, hush your mouth.
With, with the consideration of the fact that bids aren't likely to be as competitive, uh, it would be our recommendation that the contract does get awarded to Miller Excavating and Asphalt. As, uh, the project was let and that additional funding from either road use tax or the residential street improvements be, um, applied to make up the difference between the original budget and, uh, the bids. Any questions from council? All both of you.
But that's only, that's only about thirty thousand dollars in, right?
Yeah, uh, actually, the, this is, uh, the five hundred and thirty thousand is a construction number, our estimate was four hun- or, our budget's four seventy-two. So we're talking about sixty thousand difference.
Plus.
Plus.
Plus a little bit of engineering on top of that, so it'll be a little bit more than that, but.
All right, I was reading the wrong number, okay. Got it.
It's, it's still not a high enough number that it puts it to where we can't, we can't find a source for the additional funds.
Yeah.
I think we should do it.
I agree. Okay, thank you, Ryan. Okay, then we have a resolution approving the dredging project costs and expenditures.
This is a long project and Stephanie can kinda review the process that we've gone back from the two thousand thirteen floods, what flood was this?
Yes, twenty thirteen. So in the resolution, I tried to just kinda recap, um, where this project was coming from and Steve can fill in too. But when we had that flooding session, um, back between May, uh, May nineteenth through June fourteenth of twenty thirteen, we had a presidential disaster. We had trouble that year, I guess after the flood, wasn't it, putting the docks in and out and so, um, when FEMA was here writing these projects, you know, of course, we had the Husco barriers put up and down and getting reimbursed for debris removal and protection, we asked about that and they said, well, let's write a project and see if it gets approved, so that's what we did. Um, basically, we, um, identified, um, the three boat ramp areas that were having trouble. Basically, the water got so low that our, yeah, the water got low and then our docks weren't able to, to be floating anymore because of the silt underneath of them. And so, uh, we wrote the project up, it was approved, we'd gotten a bid back in twenty thirteen from Mattson to remove these areas based on an estimated cubic yards of silt removal from our engineering department, right, Steve? That's, that's how the original bid got out there for the hundred and nine thousand. So basically, then it went through the FEMA process, it got approved back, um, in, in twenty thirteen for that amount. So since then, we've just been waiting to actually do the removal, so in fourteen.
It went through several phases, we couldn't get it done with high water.
Right.
And we were waiting for the water to get low enough for the work to occur in two thousand thirteen. By the time, by the time the water got low enough, the river had frozen.
Yeah.
And then by the time that we got to a spot where Mattson's could actually do the work, uh, then it was a question of whether the funds would still be obligated and requirement for these additional studies to be done, it's been a long, drawn-out process.
Yeah, every quarter or every time we would do an extension to say, okay, we think we can get it done in this amount of time, well, in between that time, we'd either have too high a water, couldn't get, you know, river was frozen. So every time it goes back up for another extension, FEMA looks at it again. And so FEMA looked at it again and started questioning, oh, did you guys do a muscle sur- survey, cause we, we can't dredge anything out without doing a muscle survey. So then we did the muscle survey, you know, they obligated the project again with a new number. Um, and then, once that got done, we were like, okay, we're on again, we went back to Mattson to say, okay, we think we can do it now, cause the project got on hold during that time, we didn't know if it was gonna be approved. They again, bid it again, um, I'm not having any luck with this. So, basically, in twenty fifteen, they bid the job again, we had a change in disposal sites too, it's just one of those, if everything happens. Um, but we got it all worked out, they started dredging in March. So basically, what this resolution is in front of you is to approve payment of, of what we've incurred so far, what we expect to, we need to incur, once we get the invoices in, um, that's why you'll see Exhibit A as estimates. Because we don't have solid invoices yet, because we're not completely finished, but we do need to start paying some of the vendors, um, such as we have taken, um, the material to the land site, um, we have had trucking costs. Um, and Mattson has done their removal. What's happening now is, um, our engineering department is finishing up getting the exact calculation of the amount of the removal, then Mattson will invoice us. We, um, and Steve can explain this more if you have more detailed questions, but we do have some of the dis- the silt still on site down where, down on the riverfront, um, that needs to be hauled out to the landfill. We're trying to get it to dry a little bit, so it's not so expensive, if the material's drier, the landfill, um, might give us a better deal on the disposal costs. Um, we also, if it dries out, we might have more room to put it at our disposal site at the golf course, that's where some of the material went also. So we tried to save money by not taking it all to the landfill, cause it's quite expensive. But again, the, I guess it was really watery, I never did see that, but that, if it dries out, we can, we can dispose of it easier. So that's why you'll see these expenses, but these are the vendors that we're using, um, to wrap it up. Once the project is complete, of course, we will, um, you know, get with Iowa Homeland, um, we're hoping, um, you know, what we've done, we followed all the procedures that FEMA would want us to, that we can get our full reimbursement of the costs that we did incur, even though, um, they have changed since they originally wrote, um, up the project, but I've been in constant contact with Iowa Homeland, which they contact FEMA. We haven't done anything out of the scope, you know, we've still stayed with the scope of the project and that's what's important. You know, we, we couldn't help but that the site changed, you know, where we could dispose of the material, so that's one of the increase in costs, so.
But we are looking at eighty percent federal, ten percent state and the remainder us and our portion of the costs on this, we have a balance.
Of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand right now in our, in our flood account.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we, we're using to cover our portion of the balance on this.
And I'm assuming the docks went in really well this year, since we did dredge and the water's high, so.
We only put one, uh, the water's too high?
The water's too high to tell if it's helped, but. But hopefully, when it goes down later this summer, we'll notice that they're, they're doing well, so. Does anybody have any questions, it's just not, it's clear as mud.
Isn't it nice to have a little bit of reserve to pay for things like this, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, this is built up over the, the last few reimbursement cycles and one of the things that's, that has helped is we're in, a, a lot of the costs that we're incurring have been, like for the, the cleanup, we're able to count our regular time costs as, and be reimbursed on that, so we're, some of our, what we're seeing in the general fund for operating costs has been reimbursed and it's been left here as, as a cash balance, which has helped us to create a reserve for future emergencies, that we do have a cash reserve set aside that specifically for dealing with this type of a project.
Yay. Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, we have, uh, a short page of nuisance abatements. On the consent agenda, then we have a taxi cab renewal for executive transportation. And then on, next on the agenda is, uh, resolution to worry the bid for complete production delivery of a type one ambulance.
I asked Kathleen to move this over to regular agenda.
Yeah, please.
Okay.
I wanna have you get some TV time, chief.
Okay, well, I'll have somebody else give you TV time next week, I have a track meet, but this is our, we're on a schedule to replace the ambulances every three years, so this is, I'll be the third year. Basically, it'll be the same type of ambulance that we purchased the last time from an in-state, if you approve it, it's an in-state, uh, ambulance builder, Lifeline Ambulance out of Sumner, Iowa. They, they, this time, they actually, they had the lowest bid, we, we, uh, built up our specs over the last few months, we had an ambulance committee that, that went over our previous specs and then tried to, you know, anything that we thought that we needed to improve on, they put those in there, they had a couple, uh, demo, uh, demonstrator ambulances, people, uh, salespeople brought them down, we looked at them. Got some ideas on what's new out there. Anyway, so we got the, the specs built out, sent out to four different ambulance bidders, builders around the, the country. Uh, out of the four that we sent out, we only had two that were returned. Uh, one was, uh, this Lifeline ambulance that's in Iowa, on your spec sheet here in the bid, it says clocky emergency vehicles, that's the, the salesman for Lifeline, that's his company, uh, he does their, he's the regional guy that we deal with. Uh, then the other one was Alexis Fire Apparatus or Alexis, Illinois. I don't know what else to tell you, it's the same type, it'll be a four-wheel drive chassis, it's on a pickup-type chassis, if you see our new. If you see our newest ambulance, it, the front end actually looks like a pickup, it's an Ford F-four-fifty chassis. The chassis is, it's a little bit better, a lot better riding than what we had previously. We were using international and Freightliner medium-duty truck chassis. We got a lot of complaints about the ride. The quality and the the durability of a medium-duty truck chassis is pretty good, but it's built to carry a lot of weight and we're not putting a whole lot of weight in them and the ride was is really bad. So, we went back to the pickup-type chassis, rides way better than what we had previously. Also, the last ambulance is probably, since I've been on the department, the best one that we've ever had as far as ride, durability, dependability, it's it's only two years old, we we got it in April of twenty fourteen. It's got seventy thousand miles on it already, so that's, by the time we get this new one, it'll go to, it'll still be a frontline ambulance. Both stations have a an ambulance that's staffed, so. It'll, by the time we replace it to a to a back row, it'll have a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it or so when they go to out of frontline operation.
What happens to the older ambulance that's being removed?
I will sell it. We we thought about trading it in, but they never want to give you a lot of money on trade-ins and we've actually had pretty good luck selling it ourselves. We sold an ambulance and a few couple of fire trucks in the last couple of years, so we'll probably do that. We're definitely going to sell one, we're not going to keep six ambulances, so. Five is what we we've been keeping, that seems to be a good number.
Okay. Okay, thank you, James. We have a resolution establish new rental fees and charge schedule for Memorial Auditorium, the point of Port of Burlington effective January twenty eighteen. Annual adjustments through twenty twenty. And I think there's a reason for that, right, Steve?
Sure. Well, I look back early in my career, one of the first things that seemed like we tackled was looking at these rates at the auditorium and essentially, as put in the memo, the rates kind of remained static from roughly two thousand three to two thousand ten. And then we had, then there was a ten percent increase in two thousand ten and then in in two thousand twelve, we put together a five-year plan with roughly about three and a half percent increase in the various rental fees. And those fees were established to go from two thousand thirteen to two thousand seventeen. And you might ask me, well, why are you worried about it this far out? But, you know, you start booking weddings and doing stuff and it's important that we have those fees established, so when people call in, you can give them the right right rates, so. And essentially, what this does is increases them about three percent per year. It's only doing the rental rates, we didn't adjust the damage deposits or if you want to rent picnic tables or other accessories. And the two pages that that were with what you asked showed what the rental rates would be. There is a class three, a class, three classes, class one is basically not-for-profit. Class two would be community organization events, wedding receptions and stuff, and then class three would be for-profit events. And then there are some things with the, when a city kind of does certain things that there basically is no charge, but. So, the the first page gives you what those actual rental rates would be and the second page is the the increase on an annual basis, how much it's, those are going up, so. Some of them, and we did them in increments of five dollars to keep it simple. So, that's basically what you have in front of you is to just take those rates and have them in place. One change that we had as part of this venue works did take over the auditorium, but since we're, our our department's still worrying about the port, they suggested we got with venue works and they just said, increase them like you like you're doing your own, so that's what we're doing, is taking that whole set of keys.
Alright. Good. Thank you, Steve. Okay, next, actually, you talk about all of these next four, Stephanie? This is a resolution amending sewer user, solid waste, stormwater and septic hauler fees.
Sure, and this is what we went over when we were setting the budget for FY seventeen, these are just the resolutions approving it to move forward. Waterworks will start billing, their quarterly billing, their next billing cycle that goes out will include these new fees, so we try to do them right away. Basically, the sewer user fees have gone up three percent, which was what was approved in the budget. Three, we did a quarter on the solid waste fees, that's the amount that that will go up. The stormwater fees also increased from the current year up three percent. And then the septic hauler fees, user fees also were increased three percent from the schedule in the current year.
Okay.
Any questions?
The only thing I'd mention within the sewer fees, there's a difference between the metered and the non-metered. If you look at our average rates in those two classifications, they do come out differently. Our metered residential is a cheaper rate than what our non-metered is on an average house. Problem is, is it's so difficult to try to match them up because it's, a non-metered house is built so differently. But what we can do is look at what the average charge is for a household that's on a a non-metered basis and compare that to the average usage of water for a typical residence and where the fees come in. And they're significantly lower on the metered. So, what we have in here is is it's a higher percentage increase trying to, over time, get the two to be to where they're more in line with each other. That being said, as we move forward, we are looking at working with Easter and Kim to do a a complete rate study. As in, our goal was for that to be for the fiscal year eighteen, which would be rates for next next summer consideration, to look at, do we have all the different categories appropriately charged in comparison to each other? So, I guess that's not this cycle, we want to make sure that we have a significant time to be able to make sure that we have adequate input from different entities or different groups across the community, take time to talk about what we're trying to accomplish with that when we do go through that process. And then just with the solid waste, the the quarter works out to a two percent rate increase. And the the main components that drive on the solid waste, ten cent, ten cent per household recycling fee increase systematic that is going, that's being charged us on an annual basis, that's included in that twenty-five cent increase. The tipping fee has been, is increasing a dollar a year, I think it's fifty dollars coming up for this summer. I could be wrong on where that is, but that's a effectively a two percent increase, that's the same increase that we're looking at doing. And then wages is the other component that we have that that impacts that, that we're trying to keep up with.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Stephanie.
Do you mean a dollar a ton and seven dollars?
Dollar a ton. Yeah.
The ninth.
Thank you.
Ninth item on the agenda is to set a date for a public hearing on April eighteenth for an encroachment agreement with Downtown Partners for a city right-of-way in the Burlington Lightscape project. Mrs. Crowner, treasurer's report?
In the packet was February's treasurer's report. Just a few things, like the downtown facade, we're still waiting on payments from participants. So, that's why that one's showing a balance. Other than that, there's not anything that's really out of the ordinary. I didn't know if you guys, when you were going through, if you wanted, had any questions about anything, I know that we're going to do some transfers later that we haven't done yet.
Transfers typically in June.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's so much fun to see those negative balances when they're gone, I just love that.
Yeah. So, some of these will stay negative until we get to June when we do our second half of our transfers.
There was, there was one or two in your expenditure summary that had like wastewater planning improvements was a hundred and seventeen percent of budget.
Yeah, and I looked at that and there's, so we had a hundred and eighty-four thousand down for like the press room and the builder belt project, but the roof.
I think the roof.
Too, and I don't think that was originally.
I think that at least one of the projects that has been charged into that is from the previous fiscal year. It was budgeted the previous fiscal year, so we've gone over in this fiscal year.
And that was like thirty-three thousand dollars.
Oh, that would, that would account for that.
Yeah. I did look at that because I noticed that. So, do you know what the other one was that you were?
The targeted jobs fund was like a hundred and ninety-two percent of the.
And that is because we really don't, we guesstimated what we were going to bring in and send back out, so those.
Targeted jobs is all about what the payroll tax collections are for the different businesses and we don't, we didn't even have the the numbers to base it off of for estimates. That's, we're a pass-through from the state.
That's a pass-through anyway.
Pass-through and a lot of it is C and H too, they did a lot of catch-up because theirs is a little more complicated to calculate their targeted jobs.
And that's an area that this next year, I can't remember what the dollar amount is that we put in.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
So that we would be.
So hopefully.
Hopefully be closer, but I I know that we're adding an another project, I think that one that we haven't hit on that.
Yeah, we have a new one that's going to start.
Silgan is going to start at some point, I don't know if that's what you're going to get at.
Targeted jobs also.
They're a targeted jobs entity as well, I just saw that.
Shears could get bigger, I mean, it's been very small so far.
Yeah.
But again, as they add jobs, it could grow also.
So, we end up, these are things that as we're budgeting, we're budgeting behind because, well, we're just not, we don't have the numbers on those.
Yeah, okay.
And some of them collected a different rate than what they even sent estimates in when they originally did the project, so.
Yeah, it's just depending on how they fill the jobs and.
Good. Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're correct, we do have fewer negatives in here. The ones that have been ongoing negatives for cash balance, the one that should get cleaned up this year, I think the parking fund gets zeroed out by the end of the year, so that won't be an ongoing deficit account. But we still do have a few. The annual seal coat program, I was noticing, that's sitting there at two hundred and eighty thousand deficit. We're planning, that's one that road use tax will transfer over the final costs on, so.
Okay. What is this garage nuisances item here?
That's Eric. Sure, go ahead.
I just had a brief update. Wide agenda here, but I guess our department's kind of, we had a staff member that was out with an injury and is coming back on kind of light duty a little bit. One of our building inspectors and not able to drive, so we're kind of making use of some of the time we have with him as well. But it's something we're looking at, I know it's a big priority is being a little more proactive with nuisances and this is one of our first steps and just give you a an update on here.
So, I caught Eric off-guard a little bit because we talked about just canceling since there's only two of you, but.
Well, we can if you'd rather.
I can go through it, it's up to you if you want.
The one thing is that this is a benefit for both you and as a council as well as the community to, so that folks are seeing what you're looking at doing too, so. There there's value to having you go through it.
So, as I mentioned, we have one building inspector that's not able to drive himself based on surgery he had, so taking the opportunity to utilize that as an opportunity to get out and proactively look at nuisances a little bit more. One being garages and then one just being kind of ongoing nuisances that we've cleaned up in the past and kind of fresh set of eyes on some of the things that maybe our nuisance inspectors have seen over the last five years and might not look, be looking at them as closely as they had in the past, so. And then just kind of going forward, a couple of things that we are looking at and still undergoing, just so that it realizes it's not off the radars, review of review of our existing Burlington code in relation to nuisance, identifying any deficiencies or improvements we can make. Looking at other cities' codes to see how they're tackling nuisance enforcement. And then bringing forward, hopefully, in the next few months, a recommendation for potential changes, be it code requirements, enforcement options and fees related to nuisance. So, as I mentioned, we're trying to look at nuisance a little proactively now, a couple, the staff is one aspect of that, having the building inspector, the other is kind of the rental cycle is cyclical. We have a three-year cycle for multifamily and five-year for single or single-family duplex and so every couple of years, those hit where we're pretty well swamped on nuisances. They do have a couple of months, at least projecting a couple of months where they're not quite as busy as they've been the last year and a half. So, not that they have a a ton of free time, but just a little lighter load, hopefully, these next couple of months than they've had in the past year and a half. So, a couple of items that we're focusing on are derelict garages. We are sending out notices for repair, demolition, and that's a benefit to have a building inspector there to help evaluate those as well. Most can be repaired, would take quite a bit of work, but some are too far gone that they would not be able to. We do include in the notice a contact the city planner for details on new construction, for location and size, and I'll get into that a little bit more. I think there's a big perception out there that if I tear down my old garage, I'm never going to be able to build anything back. And looking at our code and pulling up some lots that don't feel that's the case in every instance. There may be some that that's the case, but majority that I pulled up and looked at, they would be able to build probably bigger than what they are now, just maybe not right on the property line or right on the alley line, moving in in a few feet. Also, looking at roofs and siding, especially relation to garages and other homes, porches, fences, junk refuge, and repeat offender standards for cleanups, making sure we're getting people to clean up to a high standard, not just better than before. So, that's something we're trying to focus on as well. In relation to garages, a section of nuisance code that applies is one sixty-three oh three, number twenty. All accessory structures, including detached garages, fences, walls, shall be maintained structurally sound and in good repair. And twenty-one, all exterior surfaces, including but not limited to, this includes doors, windows, roofs, et cetera, shall be maintained in good condition, exterior wood surfaces shall be protected against the elements by painting or protective covering. And then in regards to rebuild our zoning code, we did update five-plus years ago, kind of hard to remember exactly when, to allow additional lot coverage, that was one item that directly addressed having accessory structures. We increased the percentage of lot that could be covered with a roof structure to allow more of these older, smaller lots to have accessory structures, whether it be sheds or garages. And then our setback requirements, which have been in place for quite a long time for accessory structures, does allow a reduced setback, three or five feet based on access to the alley and the rear yard and as long as they're ten feet away or more away from a a home. So, these setbacks are based on safety, maintenance, access drainage. We get complaints every so often where we have some of these older garages right on the property line and they're saying their neighbor won't allow them on their neighbor's property to maintain or repair their garage and and then it becomes a big private property issue of what's the requirement to allow someone onto someone else's property to maintain a garage just because it's on a property line or falling into an alley, potentially affecting traffic through the alley, roof runoff of the rain directly onto a neighbor's property. So, a lot of issues come up when they are, some of these older garages that this three or five foot is a minimum setback, but it helps address some of those. As I said, typically, allow new construction is allowed through, our new structure is allowed based on our code, though it may have to be moved. Some of the older garages are right on the property lines, but as I mentioned, the three and five feet is a a minimum setback. Looking at existing conditions, setbacks codes to see conformity, non-conformity, as we mentioned before. For some of these infill sites, we're also looking at accessory structures, something through our zoning code. I did pull up a a couple of these garages, I'm going to show just some pictures of, and then some of our smaller lots we have in North Hill, just to see where they're at on lot coverage and if they did remove a garage, what they could rebuild. I had a lot on North Fourth that was thirty-five by a hundred and nineteen, so it's four thousand one hundred and sixty-five square foot lot. In the R four, they're allowed to cover fifty percent of their lot, they have a twelve-hundred-and-twenty-one square foot house, just the building footprint. So, based on that, even though it's a very small lot, thirty-five by one nineteen. So based on that, even though it's a very small lot, thirty-five by one nineteen, they're still allowed eight hundred and sixty-one square feet for a new garage, uh, which a typical twenty-four by twenty-four is five hundred and seventy-six square feet. That's kind of the average, um, that most people want to build. So, uh, even on a thirty-five foot wide lot, they're still able to build, uh, a two-car garage, uh, based on our setbacks and lot coverage and everything else. Had a lot on North Seventh. It was a thirty by a hundred and seventeen, thirty-five hundred square feet, uh, eleven hundred square foot house. The footprint of the house, again, they're allowed a six hundred and fifty-two square foot garage. So we do have a lot of, um, older, small lots with existing housing on them. There, they have an existing garage that if they're to tear down and want to build new, they are able to. But that's something we hear quite a bit, just in the planning department is, I don't want to tear down my garage because I'm never gonna be able to build something again. And, uh, looking, and I specifically picked out the lots with the most coverage I could find, the smallest lots. And looking at a lot of them, uh, not say every instance, but a lot of them can rebuild, probably more than people think. And that, that's one reason we increased the lot coverage in our three and our four districts to forty-five percent, fifty percent, to allow, uh, more density with these bigger homes, to allow detached structures. And then looking at some of the garages, we're targeting, most of the times these aren't used for garage, or for vehicle placement. There are nuisances in the garage as well, a lot of trash or junk or debris. So we're trying to pick out a lot of the very poor-conditioned garages and, um, as you see here, falling over, really a blight on the neighborhood. Even when they're in the backside of the neighborhood, they're, they're a blight on the neighborhood. Some may be able to be recited or re-roofed. Uh, some, like in the lower right-hand corner, is just gonna have to be torn down. And again, they could rebuild a garage there or put a storage shed on if they just want to store their lawnmower. But, um, some of these are in condition or placement that they will have to be removed, so. And tarps are not, uh, adequate for roofing material and, uh, so that's just, uh, we've just started that the last, uh, couple of weeks, uh, just a couple hours, uh, a few times a week that he's been able to get out with them, but. So we haven't gotten through the entire town. I know they started on the south side. I asked them to look at South Hill, Saunderson Heights, North Hill, or kind of the, we have existing neighborhood associations there. Let's, uh, work with those as much as we can to start with and kind of spread out. So it is something we are looking at and, uh, we'll be sending out notices shortly on those to let people know we have a situation here and.
We don't have the staff to do as much as what.
No.
I mean, technically, what you could do. There's, there are enough issues in the community that, that need to be addressed or could be addressed. We can't get to them all, but we do want to try to be a little bit more targeted on some areas and, and take care of some things that just need to be done.
Yeah. And part of it is that fresh set of eyes that we're gonna, as I mentioned here, ongoing, um, working with our, our building inspector that, in the time we have with him, where he can't fully get out and do inspections on his own, but he can ride with someone to go on his inspections or, uh, go and look at areas that, as I said before, our nuisance inspectors maybe have been to four or five times and it looks to them a hundred percent better than what is, it started at, but it's still maybe not there and, uh, getting them to clean up to a higher standard, not just better than what it was. So that, that's something we're not just looking at garages. He's looking at, as we're driving around those properties as well. It's not something we're gonna have him all summer long, um, but it is something I did ask our, and talked to our inspectors about. Hey, if they can get two hours, one of them once a week or something, to try and get out there and have a fresh set of eyes to work with our nuisance inspectors and get that different view that, uh, we don't always get. Enforcement options, one thing we are getting from our attorney is, uh, we're working on a streamlined municipal infraction process that we could use for certain nuisance cases. We used somewhere to the individual that had the tent and debris on Washington Street that having a process in place that we can do better staff-wise and not have to use our attorney for all that. Also on zoning side or other right-of-way issues that, uh, having the forms and everything. So they're providing us with that, that there are cases that a nuisance isn't just the best option. Sometimes it is. It's quicker and easier, but sometimes a municipal infraction holds more, um, force behind it, so there's a balance there. Working on that as well. And then, as I ma- mentioned, continue to do our nuisance code review and bringing something back on any suggestions of what we could do better or different options that other communities are working on. Our zoning code review, as we talked about, uh, and Jim had mentioned, and then just being consistent. And, uh, we realize who we're dealing with and who we interact with on a daily basis. Not everyone can, has the same means to address things, but, uh, working with them and making sure they understand the importance of maintaining quality community standards as well, so. That's just a brief update on something we're able to do, take that, the advantage unfortunately of someone else's inability to get out and do his job like he'd like to, but we're using them to the fullest extent and, uh, hopefully having an impact through this and get around and address some of these issues that have been there for quite some time. So I just wanted to give a brief update on that and make people aware. We are out looking at this and, um, trying to get the word out and we are sending notices out. I think last week, the first ones went out.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. It brings up a, an item. We approved, uh, was it a CTBG for the South Hill, certain area that people could apply for and get help. Has that started yet or have people?
No. And I don't know that we've heard, we haven't heard back on that yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
That, I, it's been submitted to the state, but I think it's still working through the process.
Okay. Okay, the last item here was, uh, appointments. We have, uh, Economic Development Advisory Committee. Joel Searan is asked to be repointed. The steering committee for the Phase Five Flood Mitigation Project. City manager Jim Frenow, Ryan Gordy Park Superintendent, Braden Hill Property Manager, Property Maintenance Manager, Jason Hutchison of the Greater Burton and Park, Burlington Partnership, a Steamboat Days committee member, uh, somebody from the City Plan Commission, Councilman Scott, Matt Rinker from the River, River Bill, Riverfront Advisory Commission, Steve Freibert from Downtown Partners, Ryan Thornburg, the city engineer Zach James, Regional Planning, and Charlie Nichols, the city planner. And that would be the steering committee.
Yeah, and this next week, that, that committee, uh, well, for the flood, flood project, we have, we're having meetings, pretty much every day next week. The times I have are like seven o'clock on Tuesday, the fifth, uh, six o'clock on Wednesday, the sixth, uh, six o'clock again on Thursday. And then, uh.
It's PM, right?
No, PM. All PM. Uh, we're trying to get members of, of the community, as many of them as, as can attend, to attend. So we found that evening meetings tend to work a little bit better than the morning. And then I, I think there's a summer, summary meeting then on Friday for that group as well.
Katie, send us.
Uh, Charlie needs to send a list, a reminder to all the committee members. And I assume that Charlie is doing the, uh, communication to get this advertised for the public, public here, or the meetings that we're having.
Talk to him in the morning, make sure.
And make sure that we're getting it pushed out to the different entities. Hopefully, he's been in communication with the radio or the paper. If not, he needs to. Uh, I know, uh, he mentioned the ti- I think he mentioned the times last time when he was here, but, um, we need to have that repeated and get, get it out. So Charlie Nichols, if you, if you don't hear from him, you want to check with him tomorrow. He can, it'd be, he needs, you need to get a good op-ed on, on that, so. Otherwise, I, you don't have enough to say whether there's any issues with the, the, the potential list of, uh, appointments, but that's what we have for, for your consideration this next week.
Okay. Anything else?
No, just, I'm going to be gone from the tenth through the seventeenth or eighteenth, so.
Okay. And, uh, speaking of next week, uh, the Burlington Bees are in town. I think they're having an open house on Saturday from one to four, I believe, and their scheduled scrimmage with SEC. And then their home opener is April seventh, I believe it is, so. Come out and enjoy the bees.
And the housing, that housing study is gonna be presented again, uh, April twelfth.
Yes.
At six o'clock at the, up at the chamber.
Five thirty.
Five thirty?
Five thirty, yeah.
So make sure that those of you who can attend make it to that.
A notice of, in case more than two of us are there for that, like we did for the government.
Yeah, we can, I'll check with Kathleen about just getting that out.
But Councilman Scott said he's gonna be gone, so. You're gonna be gone. You'll miss that, so. Maybe it won't be a problem.
I'll check with, see if that, who else is gonna attend.
Anything else, sir?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, we're done. Thanks. Thank you, sir.